Okay, so the first thing on the agenda today is the theory on extending the memorandum on the electric boilers. Would you like to open the meeting? Any comments from the public on the memorandum on the electric boilers? Any comments from anyone on the board? So this is going to be good till October 21st of 2021, correct?
Correct. And I would expect well before then to have a draft of the actual local law. And I did reach out again to my contact person at NICOM. I have not, I think I mentioned I was going to do that for our last meeting. He hasn't gotten back to me again, but I would expect he will. And I'll send another email tomorrow to see where he is.
They're having their big NICOM conference, we might not be able to visit.
All right, that might be. But he didn't tell me he was going to get back to me in an email that he had sent me before the last meeting. But I have not heard back.
Any other comments? Go on once, go on twice. Move to close the hearing and go to a roll call vote.
Any motion to close the hearing?
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty Pelkey?
Aye.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Minutes of May 17th regular and regular and June 1st special meeting.
Please skip.
Oh. Open meeting to the public?
Thank you.
Yes, welcome. I am here.
Sharon, please.
Oh, my name is Sharon Richards and I'm at 17 Maple Street. And I'm here, I'm surprised there's not more people here, but I didn't ask more people to be here. There has been talk on Facebook, second summer in a row, about the people who have these burn pits, burning wood in their yards, here in this village setting. And over the years, I mean, I even had one about 15 years ago that I tried, but it was just too much smoke all come in my house. It's been sitting out behind the garage all these years, it just never gets used. And, but my next door neighbor, why I find is that I have to speak up and say something about this, because I have put up with, I mean, smoke coming where I can smell it during the night. I've had to shut a bedroom window or something, or turn off an air conditioner because it's sucking in the smoke, but I figured, oh, this is village life. But my next door neighbor now has constructed this thing out of field stone. It's not 25 feet away from any structure. There is all this scrub brush that's no more than two or three feet behind it. There's branches from the tree, these weed trees, overhanging it, and they're not any more than three feet above it. And he wants to use this to socialize with. He burns papers in it, but it's a danger to the structures that are around it. I don't know if any of you have ever had to fight with an insurance company to take care of the bills from whether it's a fire in your home, or smoke damage from a house next door, but I did about close to 40 years ago, and I don't ever want to have to deal with it again. And this is what can happen for, because of that fire pit he's got at my house, at Claire Dietrich's house, at the apartment building on the corner now, and that's who, it's also the same guy owns that two apartment building plus this little house. They just mowed the lawn the other day, and I can't fathom why a landlord would let that be there in the yard, just for the insurance reasons. But I is wondering if this village has some kind of a, a system where, I know I spoke with John a few weeks ago, I don't know if you ever went to talk to the guy?
I have been there twice, actually I spoke to him the day before yesterday, and that's why his lawn got mowed, because apparently, I contacted him before, he said his landlord took care of the lawn. And I contacted him again, and then next day it was, the lawn was mowed and things was okay. I also asked him at that time not to use that thing at all, as long as it's hot and humid and everybody's running their air conditioning. I don't have any control, I can't tell him he can't burn a fire, but I asked him to just not to do it.
But that's what it looks like.
But the only thing is, he's a, he was very, he was really good about it. He said, I won't burn it if the, if the air conditioners are running or anything like that. That was a step.
Well, the last weekend of the month when we have the 4th of July celebration, because when I did talk to him the same day I called you, and like how he wants to have some friends over and they can sit around and enjoy the fire, well, look at the trees that overhang this, you would all like to see it?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Pass that around.
Sparks, embers, uh, that's not, and it's just made out of field stone, it's not even tight fitting. I did not go, did you look at it, John? Does he have a sand base underneath it?
No, no, he didn't. Nothing there.
So something burning can inch its way out on the lawn? When I talked to him, he says, I'll have my fire extinguisher right here with me. Are you going to sit out here all freaking night waiting to make sure that it's not creeping along anyplace else? It's not a properly installed fire pit, the trees that are all there. There's a, there's a fence, I've lived there 37 years and that fence has been there as long as I have, so you can imagine how dry that is. I don't think Claire would want to lose her house or have to deal with smoke damage.
Cooper?
Um, there's, there's no, other than distance from the house, there isn't any real regulations?
No, they don't have anything like you have to put a, you know, like she's saying with a sand base in there and things like that. And he's only got, you got, he's got like one brick high all the way around, it's a kind of a touch and go situation. I asked her to come to the meeting to voice her opinion about this, and she would like to say, have you board members considered drafting a little bit of legislation to have a little bit more control over this? And that's why she's here this evening.
I mean, there's been people on Facebook that have complained of neighbors throughout the village here where they have to close their bedroom windows because their neighbors are out.
One person, one person, she called the fire department two, three times.
Did she? Well, I haven't called the fire, I called John, I know they're all over the place, but this, this is definitely a safety issue for the homes all around it.
I think this should be addressed by the board. If you need a witness about this, you can talk to Susan over there. Last year we had the same problem, big time over on Herb Street, we finally got them to slow down, but I think something should be put in the code to address this. And I think maybe, maybe Tom is here this evening, he might have an idea what we could actually do, limit the size, limit something, I don't know, but.
My understanding is the fires can only be so big anyway, like.
Yes, you can also awfully say that, but you know.
Yeah, but that's based on what?
In the village code, it's like, you know, it's so wide and so high.
Is there some kind of regulation for fire pits or something like that? That's what I was just going to ask.
I don't know if we do.
Is there anything on the books right now?
It's just a distance from this place to that place, there's not a lot, you know, a lot of, but there's one down there by Sue's place and over here at Sharon's place. I mean, my personal opinion of this, something should be done, and we should have a rating. So when you go and address the people, you have something to say, this is section 120-39 of the village code, and this is the way it is.
Yeah, because there's enough guidance now on how to build a proper burn pit, we could actually make a code. There's good ways to build a good burn pit.
What's wrong with telling people they have to have a gas? They want to enjoy the ambiance outside, have a gas stove. You can pick those up for 200 bucks and up, you know? If you want to enjoy your night outside, you get propane gas. Then you're not going to have the smoke, the noxious smoke, like, I mean, what a fire pit is like too, what your neighbors will smell is what kind of wood you're burning. What are you throwing into that fire pit to help get those flames going? Whereas the gas ignited propane gas, it just, when you live in a village setting, you have to take into consideration your neighbors. I shouldn't have to get up and close my windows, or anybody else, get up and shut out their air conditioners in the summer months, close their windows, you know, so we don't smell the neighbors, the smoke, whatever trash wood they're burning, coming into my home. And it's happening to people all around the village, and it's not right. I can understand, yeah, people like to enjoy their yards, but I like to enjoy the interior of my home too. And if I want to open the windows for fresh air, that's what I put up with this, I've lived here 37 years in this village, and I've had neighbors over the years that burned wood in their fireplaces and furnaces in the winter months. And I like to sleep with my bedroom window open about an inch or two in the winter months. Many a night I've had to close that window, but that's different, these are people heating their homes with the wood. But when it comes to the summertime parties and everything, you want to live like this, go get a campsite. We should not have to put up with it in a village setting. I mean, it used to be even in Plattsburgh, and you drive around this town, you see a lot of it, and I don't know what the codes are for this, the gas grills that are on people's wooden porches. In Plattsburgh years ago, I mean, about 15 years ago, a good friend of mine had to sell her new grill, because it was on a wooden porch attached to the apartment building. I don't know what that is around here, but, I mean.
Other than what should be common sense of not putting grill on.
But there's a lot of people that don't have the common sense they were born with. Just like this fire pit this guy built, with a tree overhanging. I mean, have you ever seen a tree go up?
Do you like, let's let Tom?
No, no, I was going to say, they even have these smokeless fire pits now. You see them advertised periodically where there's no smoke really being generated from them. If you want to burn wood, you can burn wood, but it doesn't create like a, like a smoke that you would have a fire pit.
Now, there's some.
Stone fire pit.
There's some really nice stuff that's been made now. And we could, we could.
I mean, but, but still, I mean, I can understand, we, first of all, I'm not familiar with what's in our regulations about this, but certainly would make sense that, I mean, even if you wanted to allow it, which is up to you, that it certainly be a certain distance from any homes, a certain distance from property lines, a certain distance from, you know, like trees, buildings, structures, whatever, it's, you know, and that is if you want to allow it, or to say the lot has to be a certain size, or whatever the case may be, so it doesn't affect, you know, neighbors. And, and again, I must say, you know, you should outlaw it, I'm just saying, you know. When you rule the regulations. If it's bothering a lot of people, which it certainly sounds like it is, that is something we should at least look at.
Yeah, Susan?
I would point out that in about a month, everybody in the village is going to be invited to participate in a survey for our new updated comprehensive plan. And one of the questions is asking about quality of life issues. And that comprehensive plan is what we're going to use to update our codes as the next step, so look for that survey and certainly put this sort of information into the survey, and then it can be contemplated by the planning committee who's updating the comprehensive plan.
Because there's certainly a lot that can be done about burn pits in terms of regulating their construction, making sure they're far enough away from property lines and buildings and any flammable vegetation, so there's a lot of things that we can do.
Wow, I hope this.
Other than like, a promise of future action based off of research and the comprehensive plan and everything like this, we can't do too much today other than start the process. And we've, you've got my backing on that, making sure these things are safe, they're not going to burn anything, burn anything down. Cooper seems to be interested in getting it done, and I think we can.
So, there is no, there is no legislation on the town codes that where a code enforcement officer, looking at that, and it's certainly, this is not, this is not a safe situation, he can't say, take it down?
Well, nothing to take down really, all he's got's a ring, but the only thing our code shows, and I'll send Tom a copy of this, and so he can take a look at it, but it always says, you got, I'm going to assume like you said, W O T P O P, it's got to be, it says the fires can only be two feet high, but that doesn't, you know, the gentleman in question here, and of course we don't mention anything to him, but he's burning his papers up there. And when I questioned him, I, I mentioned to him just the other day when I spoke to him again, what the heck are you burning? Well, he said, I burned all my papers, I burned, but you can't do that, you know?
No.
But me talking to him, and him being in there at different times, you know, I do the best I can, but you know, it's a start, really, I can't be there all night long. And, but, and I, when I go talk to him, of course, it's like everybody else, and you get a story, but the story isn't always true. But Sharon has a legitimate complaint on this, last year Sue was in the same thing, and something actually, we should get some little deal going here so guys can do something.
Wow, yeah, it looks like, looks like basically he threw some stones in a circle and.
That's all it is.
Called it a burn pit, and that's not really acceptable.
No.
So is there a distance from a property line or a structure?
Distance from a property line, distance from any dwelling, but the thing is, and the fire can only be two feet high, but we all know what I thought.
What, is it four feet?
Keep throwing more and more on.
Is it four feet or 20 feet, or 25 feet?
I can't remember right offhand.
Sue said 25 feet.
25 feet.
I was told years ago, it was, it was several years back, it was 20 feet. This, this guy Brockway was on Facebook the other day saying four feet, because this guy, John, Sharon there, his last name is, he, he likes the remark, you know? That there's no, nobody in this town seems to know what the actual legislation is, or the actual codes are.
The gentleman that put it on Facebook, did he tell you that I made him stop burning, started from me the other day? You didn't mention that?
Was that Brockway, or?
Yeah, Brockway.
No, yeah, so he's another idiot.
Can you not keep naming individuals, please?
Yeah, well, anyway, but the thing is.
Well, I'm sorry for naming names too.
Like I say, you know, it's, you catch him doing it, the neighbors call, of course, and I go up there and I go right in their backyard, and I take pictures, I got pictures of everything, but, like I say, I think the law should have some teeth to it, let's put it that way. If we're going to do this, we should say, say, okay, the first offense is like 100 bucks or something, or, you know, whatever.
Because right, we have a ban on burning garbage, right?
Oh, yeah.
But is there no fine attached to that?
Well, if you brought it up, but you know, getting things to the court, and of course, you know, they all go to the court and the judge is very sympathetic and it doesn't work well.
Should be sympathetic if they're burning garbage in there.
Yeah, but.
About the third time in front of the judge, the judge should feel sympathetic.
Should we just keep raising the taxes?
You've got to start that, you've got to go from there.
Yeah, there's got to be a process to start.
Well, if you, I believe if you rule a citation right now and set it up there, you might get there in four months.
Outside of not having a court in the village?
Well, it's not only that, but you know, we had this COVID thing here and everything, they didn't open any court every month after month after month, so, well, Tom, Tom goes court all the time, he knows all about it.
I think we do need to look into what's on the books right now, and see if we can go forward, Sharon.
Okay, thank you.
There's definitely a lot of room for improvement.
Well, even if there's something there that we can, we can, you know, ask by Tom and say, yeah, we can.
Force it, go more.
Right, it's got to be more than 25 feet or 25 feet from a dwelling, and if it's not, well, then we'll have to push forward.
Yeah, but you know.
We have to start somewhere. And away from the tree line.
Yeah, I mean, it, the tree line should be included in that 25 feet.
Well, it should be within combustible material, and that would be.
Yeah. But some people need everything spelled out.
Spelled right out.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly doable. I just, I, I didn't know you were coming tonight, ma'am, I would have been a little more prepared to, to your state, but, but, you know, we can take a look at it, and if we feel the need to make some changes or modifications, we can.
Would that be a moratorium or change of the law?
Just in the code, can we just put it in the code?
I mean, it depends what's in there now.
Right.
If it's something that allows them with, with like certain restrictions, I mean, you could put a moratorium in place, I suppose, but.
Until we get something.
Until we make the changes, or if it's something we can, you know, make, make changes pretty fairly quickly, we can just go ahead and do it.
So we just have to look at the code, see what's there?
See what's there.
Because I'm pretty sure none of us have checked out the memorandum.
I don't know what the code is on that.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna, I've got some stuff to send to Tom tomorrow anyway, I'm gonna send him down a copy of our vote and take a look at it.
Sure.
Okay, is that agreeable?
That'd be great.
Say if there's any fines for violations or anything like that, because if there's a code for saying you can't do X, but then there's no fine for it, then it's a code of no fees, it doesn't do anything.
Well, that means they're each modifying the person.
Yeah.
Well, even if, why can't there be something with the village, and this would be a fundraiser, it would raise funds for the town, if people want to burn, they want to have these fire pits, that they have to, just like you get a building permit, they have to get a build, they have to have a permit to have that in their yard. And then the code enforcement officer would go take a look at the setup, and if it's a safe, practical setup, okay, but, because there's other people, if they're not setting things up right, I mean, like my neighbor, you know? And two, I mean, if it's causing problems with neighbors when it comes to the smoke, it's like if neighbors were to complain about it enough times, then that person would just have to remove his smoke pit, or his fire pit. Does that make any sense?
Dale?
We could, I mean, we can legislate pretty much wherever we want with recent course, but, so, certainly building permits is a possibility, because then we can, we can make sure that's constructed properly. That is, I think, a good, not a bad idea.
I mean, a lot of people have those portable things, and I've seen them in people's driveways, I've seen them out in people's backyards, but the, the thing is, it's to have the proper distance away from buildings, away from trees and shrubbery and everything, you know?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I have something. Lori Langlois, I'm here to bring up the topic of the dog park, see where the board is at with it. I know we saw, I saw a discussion on whereabouts, word around the street, and I said, the mayor, you had commented on it, I think, Joe, you had too, I'm not sure, that the, the location has changed?
Dale actually showed the word, everyone was thinking we're putting it today.
Okay.
The west side of the rec park.
East side?
East side, yeah, sorry.
East side.
East side of the rec park, it's between the ballfields and Memorial Park.
Yep.
There's a small clearing area there.
Really, that's where you had looked at it before?
We had looked at that before, yep. Yep, that's where we had thought originally. And do you have any idea when the construction could begin?
We don't exactly have a timeline, because one thing we need to do is sit down with a bunch of residents that are interested in dog parks, and figure out what the rules are going to be, before we start building anything, so we can know what the rules are going to be, how they're going, people are going to handle their dogs there, and how many poop bag stations are going to be in there, and just make sure we have all the rules set up first.
Well, I.
Definitely, there are going to be people that don't pick up their dog food.
Exactly, and I know that I had given information out to the board, what, two years ago, I think, when I restarted this, because there were signs that I took photos of when I went to visit a dog parks in Plattsburgh, there's rules that there have to be posted, there's a sign from the Clinton County Health Department that has to be posted, more or less saying it's a responsibility of your, to your, you know, the dog owner, if something happens, it's not, the village isn't responsible, if a dog bites somebody else's dog, there were copies that I gave to the board. There's not a lot of rules to set up, it's just like the fence, the height, the fencing and the gates, the two, the two gates in and out.
And a maintenance gate, so something can a lot more.
Yep, you need a maintenance gate, and then you need the two gates in and out, so the dogs can't get out if one's coming in. So I did, I did, I don't know if Dale, if you have any of that information still that I had?
No, I don't.
I mean, I had given copies to the board, and I had signs, and I can make other copies and give them to you again.
I know there are some residents in the village that's objected to having a dog park down here. Because it's so nice down here now and stuff, and that, they don't want to take and ruin what's, what's here now.
Right.
And stuff, and, and putting in a dog park and stuff like that.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure, I'm not surprised.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's quite a few.
Yeah.
I think where we're, where we're going to put it, it's not going to affect the looks or anything.
It's not too close to any, it's not too close to anything, it's not in Memorial Park, it's on the edge between, it seems like a decent spot.
It'd be off the, yeah, it's off the, to the side.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I mean, there's a lot of people that bring their dogs down now.
To the east of the sidewalk, by the ballpark, you know, and it's before Memorial Park, so, I mean, it's right in between there, and I don't think it's going, I mean, it's basically right now is just a mold piece of land, and it's not really used for anything.
What, what's the size of these?
It's about 100 by 100, right Dale?
Well, I walked it off, I mean, it's probably going to be, it's looking like maybe more like 60 by 120 or 130, you know, it's going to be a little more narrow.
Narrowed than, okay.
You know, I walked it off tonight and last week, so.
And I know that they.
It's a bit of a small size for a dog park, but.
Well, I mean, 60 by 120, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's, I think it's going to be a decent size, and the dogs can, you know.
And normally you have, normally like they'll have a bench in there, because you normally are in there with your dog, you just don't let your dog out there and go wild. The owner is in there with their dog, they usually have a station where you can, with the bags and the garbage, so they, you know, people, and like I said, there's rules on the outside, and you have to pick up after your own dog. I know people that walk the streets, they don't, but they should, I mean, there's enough dog receptacles around.
Yeah.
The bags, it's just fantastic.
I think there are a few other possible spots, but that's, the town, so we're, we're looking at it currently, it's the best one.
I think.
Just in terms of having parking and accessible.
I think it's the best place, because people can bring their children down, they can go to the playground, they can play soccer, whatever, and they can also bring their little fur buddies in there.
Yeah, yes, they have kids playing baseball or softball, they can bring their dogs down and watch the game and.
Right.
Watch their dog at the same time, so, yeah, I think it's an ideal spot.
How tall is the fence in the yard?
Four foot.
Four foot?
Yeah, it's four foot fence.
Yeah.
Is that the standard size for a dog park?
Well, it all, it said that it was, usually it'd have to be five feet or higher.
Five feet or higher.
That's what I had seen.
That's not what you gave me, Jen. The stuff that you sent down said four feet.
Yeah, it does say four feet.
It did say four feet? If I had had, let me see.
Yes?
Can I ask a question? You just made a remark, Dale, you can be watching your kid play baseball or soccer and watch your dog in the dog park. So who is with your dog when you're not?
You are.
Then how are you watching your kid?
You can watch your kid from the dog park.
From the dog park, okay, okay.
It's going to be open, it's just a fence.
So meanwhile, though, we're not, are you going to have people that, they're going to, okay, their dog's going to run around the dog park a little bit, then they bring their dog back to the soccer field or the baseball field, where everybody is playing and there's a lot more people?
Yeah.
Dogs are allowed down there.
They're leashed.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, yeah, there are, yeah, you can bring your dog for walking down there now.
You have to leash your pet.
Right, okay.
Throughout the village.
Yeah, okay, so it's, it's allowed, you can, you can bring your dog to a soccer game or a baseball game down there, okay? As long as it's on a leash.
What the dog park is, it's a fenced in area, where you can take the dog off the leash and allow it to run around, get some exercise.
Yeah.
But outside the dog park, you have to have it on a leash, it's a leash law.
Right, but the owner has to remain with that dog at the dog park too.
Yes. If you're wasting the kid at the dog.
It's next to the ballfields, so they can see the ballfield from the dog park.
Okay.
My next question is, was there, was there any funding left in the, from the, well, budget before the, the previous mayor had said they were going to put money in the budget for a dog park at one time?
It's still there.
It is still there? It is, okay. Is there any way I can, I know the number?
Sure, I just look it up.
Because I do have, I've taken donations, and I look currently at this 1,806 dollars that I have collected from donations from people around the village, and once I know, I knew, like, that's why I came tonight, because once I, I can get a definite ballpark[1737.23] get a definite ballpark figure when construction will be beginning again, I'll go out and try to canvas and get more donations, so we can maybe put a, you know, get a memorial bench or do something, you know, for, for the dog park and help, you know, fun, help with funding.
Cause I heard a few people wanna donate things like tubes that dogs can run through and things that-
That'd be great, I mean, because the dog, dogs like to do that, and they like to play.
I think in, I think probably it's gonna be late summer, by the time we get done our construction, summer construction.
Twenty-five hundred?
Cause I wanna make sure we have all the rules and policies before we put it up.
I was pretty sure it was true.
Great, thank you. Well, that's all I really had.
Can you send me extra copies of the rules that you've got?
Yes, I will, I will do that, I can drop them off at the office.
Okay, thank you.
All right? All right, thank you.
I think we're looking, like I said, Lori, probably maybe late summer, early fall.
Okay.
You know, once we get done road construction and everything for the summer, so.
All right.
Once we get a little bit of time.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other public comment? Okay. Minutes of May seventeen and regular and June first, special meeting.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes in red, or print? Print, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, bills. Any modifications or changes to the bills, our sir?
We have one addition, it's, uh, New York State Electric Gas paid an invoice to, uh, to the village, and it should've been payable to the government wholesaler, so we're just doing it in and out, so, uh, we need to amend the bills for a thousand dollars to the government wholesaler.
Make a motion to pay the bills as amended?
All in favor?
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. On page four, Department of Justice bill for thirty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars, can we get, uh, what that was for, like you did last month?
Yep.
Let me copy it.
Susan, how much of that was being covered by a grant that you gave that forward?
That will be covered by the, um, N B R C grant. We have five hundred thousand dollars in N B R C, and it will be used to pay the, um, land acquisition that, uh, phase one study that we had to do before we purchased the land, the legal fees associated with that, and then any money left overs going to the engineering. So about, you know, three hundred and something thousand dollars will go towards engineering fees.
So all this money that, like-
Yeah.
Last two payments that we made, the twenty-eight and the thirty-two, and now the thirty-three, that's all covered underneath that grant?
Yes.
The five hundred thousand?
Right.
So we're not taking that out of our water fund?
No, no, no.
Not until, not until the grant runs out?
Right, not till that grant runs out at five hundred thousand.
Thank you. All, all in favor of paying the bills as amended?
Aye. Aye.
Any correspondence today?
No, there isn't.
Of course, uh, I was gonna bring up the dog park, but we've already done that. Uh, I do have a small update on the fire, fireworks, I've been getting a lot of comments on that. I spoke with the sheriff today, and what he needs is, some, when it happens, we need to call the sheriff's department or the police department so they can do something, because if he called them like a couple of days later, they can't do anything after the fact, because of the level of offense it is, the officer has to be there to witness the event. They also need people to attach their names to complaints, they can't do anything with a anonymous complaint.
That's for what, fire?
For fireworks. And that's, uh, what they told me today when I was talking in their office, because I brought it up there. Uh, they've also been tracking the one guy that's been looking in people's windows. Well, he's not really looking in people's windows, but he's been going around at night looking at people's yards and stuff, he's gonna, yeah, they're looking into that. Okay, uh, resolution twenty, twenty-one dash thirteen, that, that- whereas certain electric customers' accounts are deemed not collectible by the village, whereas is advisable to write these accounts off in books, therefore being resolved that the attached list of accounts will be written off effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, question of the foregoing duty, but a roll call vote, so, roll call vote. Everybody's ready?
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion for a roll call vote?
Second.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Kalki?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. Covid nineteen policy update before we vaccinated employees?
Jen, sorry, um, we have another resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Budget modification resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen. Whereas the Board of Trustees deems an advisable next set of modifications to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two will of budget, be it therefore resolved that the treasurers authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, small, an increase to water supply, power and pump, P S plant operators, social security, Medicare increase, appropriations, fund balance appropriations. Can I say what this is, I said, because you told me what it is?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a mayor, it's a, to correct an error in the budget on some of the salary. The longevity, longevity rate is, is, for me.
This, but someone gets their longevity and it wasn't put initially?
The amount's a twenty cents amount.
Motion for a roll call vote?
So move.
Second. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Kalki?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. Okay. Now, Covid nineteen policy update for fully vaccinated employees. And these are the updates. Uh, staff who are not fully vaccinated or do not want to provide proof of vaccinations must continue to wear masks and follow all requirements of the Village Safety Plan Version Four. Staff who can prove they are fully vaccinated no, no longer need to wear masks at work, a copy of the vaccination card must be provided to the administrator and supervisor department. Uh, cleaning, while a clean and sanitary workplace is beneficial, no longer be necessary to, before going to fully vaccinate, staff can disinfect the work area at the beginning of each shift and between uses by different employees. Work sites open to public, they continue to be disinfected daily. Self-screwing for illnesses must still be done by all staff prior to coming to work. Contact with a confirmed positive Covid nineteen case is no, no longer requires quarantine if staff remains asymptomatic. A positive Covid nineteen test, even in a fully vaccinated person, is possible, and such employee must follow according to requirements of the Department of Health. Signed, self-posted on all doors, stating that anyone who is full, who is not fully vaccinated must wear a mask. Masks and sanitizer, disinfectant wipe and sprays will continue to be provided to staff upon request.
Can I make a motion that we pass this updated version of our Covid nineteen?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one question.
Yes?
I know it says administrator, supervisor, department, but if somebody can to keep track of all this, whether they're vaccinated or not? And then when somebody walks in the back door, we're gonna know they're vaccinated or not beforehand.
Yeah.
Yes, we should.
We should.
I would say Susan should know.
Yeah, and the reason I added the supervisor of the department is they're also scheduling the work, you know, who's gonna be in trucks together, who's gonna do what together, so they'll be able to, you know, remind if they need to, um, who, who needs to wear a mask.
Yep. Yep, that's the, uh, why they have to provide a proof to the-
Yeah, no, I just say, you know, I don't know if everybody's vaccinated or not, so.
Right. I would also-
I think most everybody is.
I would also say that, unless there's a board, we should show our vaccination cards to this-
So you're part, you're part of the staff, so.
I'm pretty sure everybody has their vaccine, I know I am.
Yep.
Okay, uh, cross-training for wastewater operator, Danny wants Zach to cross-train as a sewer plant operator. Does that require a motion, or just kind of a move, please?
Uh, Danny wants to cross-train Zach at the sewer.
Now, is that going to be an issue with the union? Is that, like, next in line, or?
No, I did touch base with, um, Megan Zetic about it, and she said that, you know, it hasn't been something that the union's been involved with the past, and that we can continue that way, and then it's an internal, um, you know, choice within those departments of who's qualified to do the training next. And Zach has his water plant operator license already, and so it's a cross-training, so, that's Danny's choice. If you wanna make a motion to approve that, I guess you could.
How many hours are you talking about over there?
He has to do one year over there, he moves over full-time.
Well, that affects your budget greatly.
Why?
Because right now he's being paid out of water fund, so if you're gonna move over to sewer fund-
Oh, because it is the same amount.
Doesn't matter, it's totally different fund.
So you have to do a budget modification, not one year.
Cause we can't just pay him out of the water fund that was working at the sewer plant, and like-
Well, what did we do?
Would the scale be different?
The last one was open there.
I understand, would the scale be different?
No.
Scale would not be different?
It's the same way to pay.
What would we need, what would you, uh, what would we need to do to solve that problem?
Coming for thirty-five thousand dollars, I'm sure, but.
Well, wouldn't you just move it from the water fund instead of paying the amount of water that's in the sewer?
No, water rent goes to water funds, we're running through the sewer.
Uh-huh. What'd we do with the last?
They, they came up with a plan. I mean, this stuff here, this is a typical, this is a typical situation that should be done at budget time. Here you are in the seventh day of new budget year-
Right.
And you're, you're all right, I'm modifying the budget, or trying to modify the budget.
Yeah, this should've been-
I don't wanna sound like the bad guy, but this, this is how this stuff works.
Story thing, yeah.
It worked, cause I don't think it was done with Dave either.
What's that?
I don't think it was done necessarily with the previous person either.
What's that?
When, uh, we had the other guy cross-training?
His, his salary was coming out of the sewer fund.
Okay, so it was done for that?
Yes. If you're moving somebody over there full-time for a whole year, I mean, that's, you can't ask your, you can't ask your, your water, uh, rate customers to pay for somebody who's working in wastewater treatment plant.
Yep.
Oh, by the law.
Yep, so I guess he just stays at the water plant for now.
Well, why don't we table this until we can discuss how we can-
Some kind of plan or something.
Yeah, table it for now.
You know, and by moving that person over, are you gonna create overtime in the water fund? Are you gonna create wat, overtime?
With, uh, with the return of Brian, that was what opened the time for Zach. So it shouldn't create any overtime.
So we just leave him there for now?
He just stays there for now, this issue is tabled until we figure out the rest of it. Okay. Uh, update on the property acquisition?
Yeah, um, well, we, we finalized everything, I'm going to say, I can't remember what day I called you, Susan, or I sent email to you, and, or send, I'm gonna say it was probably at least, uh, two weeks ago, maybe. So it was shortly after the last meeting I was here, which was on May seventeenth, that I finally got all the additional documents I needed from the attorney for E R S, and everything has been filed, everything's been recorded, the monies have been sent to E R S. Insurance is put in place on the property, so, uh, you guys own the property now. Probably, I'm gonna say it was probably two weeks ago, about that. So as soon as I get the deed back, um, after it was recorded with the county clerk, I will put it onto the village for safety. John's creeper? Everything's good.
Thank you. Uh, request executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, request executive session to discuss the, uh, to discuss the history of a particular employee.
Taylor, yeah.
Taylor, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And that is all I've got. Trustee Arnold?
Uh, the fire department, there are many splits, they're all hooked up and working well. Uh, I'd like to discuss, uh, or have an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular employee.
Second.
And discussion on, um-
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And another executive session on our, I don't know how I'm gonna say it, or whatever, Mr. Renee, you got the, the outcome on our-
Um, ac- actually, I, I do not, it was sent to you directly, I didn't even copy it.
I don't have nothing.
Okay. I, I can give you an update, but I guess it was a pending investigation. Okay, so, I can give you an update on that during executive session.
Okay, so that's a, right? An update on the-
Pending investigation.
And second, uh-
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Dale?
You all done back here?
Yes.
Um, I would just let, uh, the library announce that they're going to, um, continue with the, the farmer's market this summer, not sure on dates yet, but they are gonna continue it, so that's a great thing. Um, and also, I would like to, uh, request an executive session to discuss administration personnel.
Second, aye.
All in favor?
Aye. And that's all I have.
Uh, Trustee Brian? Trustee Kalki, me?
Yes, I have a question about the broken bollards down at the pier. They've been broken for over a month now. There is bulbs that are completely broke off, there's jagged pieces of plastic that's sticking out of the bollards that somebody can get cut on. It's been a month, it should be repaired, it's a safety issue. And unfortunately, we can't, as trustees say, I think the, to, the department has, but, um, it's a simple solution to fix it. I mean, we retrieved the parts of the bollards that were missing out of the lake, they just have to take the bulbs out, put new bulbs in, and for a fix within one day, they can go to the local hardware store and buy a piece of plexiglass and wrap it in there and just glue it, so the kids can't stick their hands in there. I'm very, you know, people go down there and take pictures, especially this time of year, for graduations, weddings, and it looks really terrible. And it should be taken care of, it should be addressed as soon as possible, you know, because it is a safety issue also. Cause I'm concerned about the light socket, the bulb is broke off, and part of the bulb is still sticking out, and they are, it is lit at night, so. And some kids go down there and grab a hold of that, the village is gonna be liable. Yes, because they're only, uh, three and a half, four feet high, well, you know how high they are, bollards, so you can put your hand right in there. But what my concern is the broken plexiglass is very sharp, and there's jagged edges, and I'd like to see that repaired as soon as possible. Second thing I wanna bring up is, in the past, the village talked about the old Rabbit Way, uh, trailer park, um, that's located off, uh, Route Two. Now, I'm not sure, was that property surplus? I know Tom Battha was mayor, and they worked on, they told the property owners down there to get a survey and start all the paperwork, but then they're gonna have to bid on it. So like, they told me, I'm not gonna have it all surveyed and get it split up and not end up with the property.
Right, why should they pay for-
Right.
Yeah, why should they pay for the survey?
Yes, so, I guess what my question is, is was the property deemed?
To sell.
To sell.
It was surplus.
It was surplus?
It was voted on, and it was surplus.
So now, I just have a, I grabbed this map today and I just wanna show Tom what property that we're talking about. This is the Rabidu Way Trailer Park, New Rabidu Way.
Okay.
These people wanna buy this property. The only thing we wanna save is the right-of-way through here because our downfall line goes out through here.
Okay, so you wanna do it like this area maybe?
Right. So what we're talking about is, Mr. Mene, you have one more, Kim? Sure. I guess what we're talking about is, the property is valued at forty-six thousand dollars on our assessment. Of course, it's worth a lot more than that because of the assessments are going up. So what I was thinking about, and it, I don't know how the board feels about this, if we can figure out to have maybe the local assessor to give us a reassessment on this property and then figure out what it is per square foot, then when we offer to sell these pieces of the property to the landowners that are attached to it, they would have to pay for per square foot of what they want. They would have to pay for the survey and, and the closing cost of, of whatever has to be done and the paperwork for the buyer. What would happen with the village, it would take the responsibility off us having this piece of land that we have to maintain all the time and, uh, and it'll put it back on the tax roll so that it gets some money. Because we've owned this land for over twenty years and did nothing with it. I mean, they talked about putting a substation down there at one time. The problem with that is you can't put a substation so close to residential houses. You'd have to be out in the field more. So it's, I don't know how you, how the board feels on this, but-
Well, I think we ought to sell it, but like I said, the people talked to me about it and I brought it up to the last mayor and stuff like that and everything. That's how, when we had a discussion and to put it on the books, to sell it.
Wouldn't we still have to auction it?
Well, see, that's the thing, is that's why I wanted to ask Tom. The piece that we wanna keep, the right-of-way is where our downfall line goes out to the lake from our wastewater plant and if we ever wanted to put a road in there, it's still wide enough to put a road.
So you'd wanna keep like, say for example, Brian, looking, just looking at the map, I don't know if you still have it in front of you, but see where it says forty-seven feet on the road?
Yep.
Kinda like that section right there?
Yes, just keep that one section. That would be a road to the sewer plant we ever had to put one to get away from the residential area. Our downfall line is in that road bed, so.
So that back here is where the sewer-
The wastewater plant is. That's all the wastewater plant's property is that back piece.
Okay. So are you talking about like extending this property line here, maybe this person eleven point one gets like behind their property, twelve behind theirs, thirteen behind theirs?
Eleven point one and the twelve is the same property owner.
Okay.
So he would like to, he would like to purchase the land behind his property.
Okay.
And, um, the lot thirteen, they would like to purchase the property behind there.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, yeah, one of the conditions would have to be those parcels have to be merged in with the existing properties.
They would be responsible for that.
Oh, we, well, it's, this would require, still require like subdivision approval, I believe? So that would be a condition because we can't create landlocked pieces. I mean, if the village is keeping that piece for a parcel that it joins there, that's fine. But, but again, you know, we'd have to have them merge that in.
Right.
Those parcels into their existing parcels.
Now, these parcels are gonna be landlocked, so they're not-
That's why they have to be merged.
Right, so they're not a value to anybody else. So what we could do is say, if we want, say, uh, two thousand dollars or a thousand dollars per square foot and we advertise that for thirty days and if somebody bids on it, then of course, the price would have to go up.
Right, but, but again, but again, if nobody owns it, I mean, the only other person has contact to it would be lot number fourteen.
Right, and he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, he just wants it maintained.
Right, so, so yeah, logically, it'd be those two people who'd wanna buy it.
Right.
Because if it's landlocked, it's not really good for anybody else.
That's what I'm saying, so if we came up with a square foot, a dollar per square foot for this property and proposed it, if everybody's happy with this-
Yep.
And then they're responsible to merging it onto their property and paying us per square foot and doing the survey, then we can go ahead and, and put this property back on the tax map.
Right.
Or back on the tax roll.
I mean, yeah, it'd be easy to draw the Ds from the survey because you definitely wanna get surveys so we know exactly how much is there. Number one, number two, you'd still have to get subdivision approval from the village planning board for it. But again, you know, from experience, I mean, as long as the board didn't want the condition that those lots be merged because you can't, you can't create a, a lot without road frontage. So that's why it would have to be merged in.
Right.
But, but, but it's all doable, I mean, it's doable.
I'm just looking for a way to move forward on this.
Right.
Because we've been talking about it for years and it just seems to just fizzled out somehow.
Yeah, so it's, it's doable. I think it's, and, and, yeah, you wanna get a reasonable price for it, you wanna know what it's worth. So if the assessor can do that and you're comfortable with the number he gives you, then, yeah, then you can proceed. Did you get a chance to talk to the assessor?
They all took, they all took a week off after the, the, the last, the taxes went out. Then they weren't up there. I went to the town with a map and they weren't up there. It should be here this Thursday though.
Yeah, it, it, you don't feel like you're able to do it, the next step would possibly be getting somebody to do an appraisal on it and try to figure it out what the value would be.
Right. But if the board is happy with appraisal from the local assessor, we can move forward possibly?
Sure, sure. I mean, you wanna try to come up with, with a valid number.
A fair market value.
Correct.
That's, that's all we're looking at.
Because that's one of the standards you have to comply with.
Right.
So if the assessor feels that you can do that, that's great. If not, you may have to hire an appraiser to do it.
Right.
But you're, you're probably talking like four hundred dollars to do that, maybe five hundred, something like that.
And that would be recouped and sale of the property?
Hey, you could, yeah. Can I do that?
So I'll see if we can get some more information on assessed values and we can talk about it in a minute.
Sure.
At least the way to move forward a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Rodriguez?
I don't know.
Can I ask a question too about that, about all that property for the sewer plant? Could we put like a community garden on that land? Or it's, or is there a use policy on there because it's a sewer plant?
Well, the field is big enough, there's quite a few acreage. The reason why we had the acreage is because we used to, uh, dry and process our own waste and we would spread it on the property. And then it got to the point, it wasn't really feasible to do that. So that's why we ended up with so much property up in the field property. I mean, um, we used to let a local farmer, um, cut the hay off for his fa- for the farm, so I'm sure it's suitable for agriculture.
Hey, the only thing we have to look at, because there are restrictions on that. Remember, we looked at that at one point, I think, for the dog park at one point. There was a question, thought about maybe put the dog park up there and we got back basically the word that, okay, it doesn't fall into the criteria. There is a restriction that seems to address that there. So we probably can look at that again, but, I mean, if it's agricultural, I mean, what, I mean, it's, it may not be a problem, but we just need to look at those restrictions.
Yeah, because it's a pretty nice area for a community garden, it'd be pretty nice.
Yeah, we just have to look at restrictions to do this. I, I don't recall off the top of my head that.
There's a something there, but I don't recall what it is.
Yeah, I, I would just need to revisit that.
Okay. Uh, any other reports? Anymore? Our son?
You were all given a copy of the audit report. I didn't know if anybody reviewed it or not?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on that?
I talked to, uh, Will Freitag, one of the auditors, and, uh, he was very pleased how, how our treasurer, our son, um, keeps our books and, uh, everything looks really great. And, uh, he actually told me that someday our son is gonna retire.
No.
Someday. And, uh, we're gonna be in tough shape when he does, because he does a very good job of keeping our books the way they are.
We know he does.
So.
We thank you for that, remember?
Yes, definitely we thank you. It's nice to get a good report.
Right.
Yeah, thanks.
Industrial segment, we're using a lot of powerful law. Twenty-one point six million to two point five million now. Uh, any public comments? Okay, uh, recess? Make a motion to go into recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming down, Sharon.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
I hope they can be done.
Well, I thought you'd be here last week. I had a copy.
Huh?
The last meeting, I thought you were gonna make the last meeting. I brought the copy of the code and everything with me.
Oh, I thought, yeah, but when I, I thought because of the holiday, Memorial Day, that's why we said tonight. I didn't know that.
I brought the code in now last week. I didn't bring it this week. I didn't think I'd show it.
See, I marked my calendar with the day I talked to you on the phone for today.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you-
It was me anyway.
Yeah, I did it.
It's easier for someone who's been through an ordeal, it's having a problem.
Do you wanna make copies of the, or? Sorry? Do you wanna make copies of the, for those who only, uh-
Those are the only ones I have.
I'll, I'll make copies of the-
Okay.
The conversation, I, on Facebook, people have talked about this all last year and I don't say a word until, until just the other day, I said, I'm not, I'm not doing this.